Okay. I'll forward the Board of Commissioners meeting for May 10. Ron, Cameron, can you introduce the alleged allegiance?
Sure. I have alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, your call.
Sheriff Devon.
Here.
Fisher Elias.
Here.
Sheriff Jones.
I'm here. Any words, Fisher, Pete recovering yet? Have you heard?
I have not yet heard from him, but I didn't really expect to today because I just had the surgery yesterday.
Well, he's shown quick and speedy recovery.
What's he sick with?
He had knee surgery, I believe.
Oh, he's with knee surgery yesterday.
Oh.
So, I think he'll be fine, just can't take a lot. He probably still hurt his individual. I'll pledge allegiance to the vote call and request the ratification approval of the agenda.
We do have one we'd like to add as item 1C, minute, approval of minutes for the week of May 2nd through May 6th.
Okay, that's it?
Yep.
Motion approved and amended agenda.
Sir.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment, is there any member of the public wishing to make comment on agenda items only at this time? Comment at the end of the meeting? You need to name tag, I thought you were going to make comment.
No, no.
No, okay.
That's what I mean.
Consider agenda.
Thank you, item 1A is approval of vouchers for the week of May 2nd. Item 1B is a confirmation recognizing May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and item 1C is approval of minutes for the week of May 2nd through May 6th.
I move to approve and consent agenda.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, reports and presentations, I guess Sheriff, I'll read this into the record and then I'll present it to you, and then I guess you're gonna also probably have another ceremony on Friday maybe with it.
Yeah, are you gonna come read it at the ceremony?
Yeah, I don't think so, I have something else scheduled. Do you want to read it Friday? Or do you have something else?
I've got something else to say.
You ever want to read an essay for the Senate?
I don't.
It's right at noon?
No, it'll be about 1:30.
Ooh. I can read that. I have something at noon, but I'm pretty sure, like how close to 1:30?
Um, we could make it right at 1:30. I'll get one for you. It's gonna be right around there.
Okay, we'll talk later, but. So, recognizing May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Clowdon County Sheriff's Office along with federal, state, local law enforcement, playing an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Clowdon County, and whereas the men and women of law enforcement unceasingly provide a vital public service, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of our law enforcement agencies, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Now therefore, we, the Board of Clowdon County Commissioners, with great pride and gratitude, call upon all citizens of Clowdon County and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, with the appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our citizens may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. We further call upon citizens of Clowdon County to observe this day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. So, present this to you and to Ron, which you come up to again. I wish you anything on this. You're off, I'm going towards. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, so. Yeah, I should know. Okay.
Sheriff, our, so.
Oh, yeah.
The place we want to turn everyone.
All right, okay. Thank you guys. Sheriff, was anyone?
No, he said it all.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Ron, thank you. Reports of presentations, Christian O'Seans.
Uh, no.
This week. Commissioner Jones.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Ross, Bill.
Oh, I just added, last night, there was a ceremony at the Spoon Elks for the Footprinters International Footprint Association Chapter 77 Award, Officer of the Year Awards to all of the law enforcement agencies and power fighting agencies on the peninsula, and we recognize Paul Federline, who is also our Employee of the Year, Deputy Federline has been with us for three years.
Very cool. Contracts and plenums.
Item 2A is agreement with Pioneer Propane LLC, Washington Limited Liability Company, to purchase an easement for the Carlsberg Sewer System Project. All this was discussed in work session May 2nd. Cost is $500 plus a hookup.
I move to approve the agreement with Pioneer Propane to purchase easement for the Carlsberg Sewer System Project.
Seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2B is Amendment Number One with the State of Washington County Road Administration Board, which will enable CRAB to authorize an increase in the rural arterial program project funding for paving and improvements to Dry Creek Road. This takes from, an increase from $369,509 to $559,509 for projects.
I move to approve Amendment One with the State of Washington County Road Administration Board.
Moved in seconded. Thanks to Ross and your team for funding these extra dollars. That's one, we've been pretty successful in that the last couple of number of years. So, thank you. Any other comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, business works.
Item 3A is bid opening for the evaluation template development and data analysis.
Okay.
Was this for the HHS Department?
I think it was.
Yeah.
I'll check with Ivan and see where we go from here.
Maybe instead of the bid process, the R2 or something, they can find a sole source of evidence.
We'll check into it.
So, is there a motion to refer this to HHS for their recommendation back to the board?
Uh, sure, I, um, uh, so.
To refer this matter back to HHS for their recommendation and have received back to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Administration.
Item 4A is resolution authorizing action on the current use assessment applications pursuant to Chapter 27.08 Clowdon County Code, Open Space Code. This is a DCD issue.
All right. I move to approve the resolution authorizing action on current use assessment applications pursuant to Chapter 27 dot 08, the Open Space Code.
It's moved in seconded. Do you want to add, DCD, anything you want to add?
Great.
Moved in seconded, any further comments, questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Budget?
Item 5A is approval of the budget modifications for the week of April 25th.
I move to approve budget modifications for the week of April 25th.
It's moved in seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public community development, public works, public hearing, public comment, any member of the public wishing to make a comment on any items of interest? Seeing no one, we should, okay. The executive session's been scheduled, unless you guys scheduled one yesterday.
Hey, Mike?
Yep. Do you want me to comment? Okay.
My name's Ron Richard. I've been on two four times of my road. I see the board has been reduced from four members to three members. That's, that is gonna be my first suggestion, if I'm lucky enough to be elected county commissioner. Anyway, I'm here today as the chair of Save the Peninsula. I'm sorry, I'm sure the chair's here, but I'm hoping to listen to the tape. Three things about the electronic warfare. As you might know, the Clowdon County Democratic County Convention itself this last weekend, and they considered a number of resolutions, among which was one I wrote, opposing electronic warfare. As you might know, there's lots of independents and Republicans opposing as Democrats this year, supporting Bernie Sanders for president. And frankly, I was a little concerned that my resolution might not pass because of so many non-Democrats who have chosen to participate in Democratic races this year. But I, I took the calculated risk, and it is just amazing how both sycrously and enthusiastically the people supported that resolution opposing the war. It was just overwhelming. I think there was a sound meter there. It would have doubled the, the sound of any other eyes for any other resolution. So, it appears to me for good reason that people in this county are overwhelmingly opposed to electronic warfare range. And I'm here today to ask the county commissioners to join the chorus. Two really good reasons, aside from that's what the people in this county want. But one is related to logging. And I've been telling some forestry community with for a number of months, including Peter Goldmark, that the forest industry really needs to be concerned about the electronic warfare range because of Marble Marlet. You know, I attended a meeting where two people from the Marble Marlet Recovery Group spoke in Jefferson County a month ago, I think it was late October. I might be forgetting the exact days, but I think Commissioner Chaplin's Peter Goldmark's fundraiser. It was just before that, and these people said that the Marble Marlet is holding its home in Northern California and Oregon, no declining of populations. The only place it's declining is in Washington State, at least as far as voters, party and conservatives. And I asked a question these people, and I said, well, how can that be? How can you, like, on logging practices? Because I don't, I'm not aware of any difference in logging practices between Northern California and Oregon and Washington. And the Marble Marlet people said, well, you know, that question's been asked before, and they don't have a good answer to it. And I'm telling the forestry people, as well as the environmentalists, that, you know, that isn't an answer you need to have, because if it is totally dependent on logging, if the decline is, you should see the same decline in Oregon and California, and it's not happening. So, I think that, you know, the Navy's proud to say that they've been doing this for 40 years and there's no problems. But maybe there are problems. If you look at what's happened to the Marble Marlet and the spotted owl in those 40 years, it's not good news. And lo and behold, yesterday, an article comes out of Truth Owl, where they say, where they have discovered through some recently released emails, that the Navy is fudging books in marking wildlife studies, and that they're attempting to get Fish and Wildlife Service to ignore the law or develop the law. They've actually admitted that they're continuing to do these exercises, and they are doing them even though they don't have the forest practices for them yet. They're doing them without a biological opinion from the Forest Service, which is required. So, you know, this is dollars and cents for our forest community, that you guys need to demand the Navy to do a study of. Because the first guy to get all this money is regulating the Forest Service and the private timber interest. And that's not the problem, and the warfare range is the problem. We need to know. You should be especially concerned that the Navy's ignoring the law on these Endangered Species Act and biological opinion statutes. That was just reported yesterday. So, that's one pretty big news that's come out recently, that shows you really need to get an audience. The other thing you had noticed in the newspaper article that, and this is really critical, there was this headline, they don't give us name, Park Visits Cline, you know, National Park Visits Cline, you might have noticed that before. And it said, you know, in 2015, the park visits rose, and Olympic National Park was the seventh most visited park in this country. And I said, when I read that, I said, wait a minute here. In 2014, it was the sixth most visited park in the country. So, something's gone on here. So, I thought, you know, maybe I'll look at that a little closer. So, I did, and it's not good news, folks. It's not good news at all. And last year, where we have absolutely perfect tourist weather, and we have a mini economy that's apparent throughout the country in visits to national parks, Olympic National Park had almost no increase in visits. And I think that it is quite logically related to the bad news that that eliciting the Olympic National Park is getting because of electronic warfare range. So, we've prepared a little press release that I'd like to read to you. The recently released 2015 National Park visitation statistics are bad news for Olympic National Park and Olympic Peninsula's most important tourist industry. With almost perfect weather during the 2015 visitor season, and with a booming sound economy, there can be little doubt of what caused these dismal figures. Most probably, they can be traced to the adverse impact of the Navy's present planned use of the park's airspace for electronic warfare training with the newest jet in its fleet, the EA-18G Prowler. Olympic drops from being the sixth most visited national park in 2014 to being the seventh most visited national park in 2014, to being the seventh most visited national park in 2015. Its visitor count increased by only 19,889. Those are pretty precise figures when they get it down to the one person. Or 0.6 percent from 3,243,872 to 3,263,761. As shown in the table below, in both absolute numbers and percentages, these were the worst statistics among the top 10 most visited national parks in 2014. Olympic National Park's market share decreased compared to all these other parks. And if you're a businessman and you see your market share declining, you need to worry about it. So, it says, percentage-wise, Rocky Mountain National Park's 21% increase was the best. And Rocky Mountain National Park is a lot like Olympic National Park, like, I threw out both of them. They would tend to appear to the same, they would tend to appeal to the same people. They had a 21% increase in numbers, something like 760,000 people. Olympic National Park was essentially five, a 19,000 increase. Number-wise, Grand Canyon National Park's increase of 763,965 visitors or 16%, that's the bad 16%. So, you go through these parks, Rocky Mountain had a 21% increase, Yellowstone is 17%, Grand Canyon is 16%, Zion a 14% increase. By the way, Zion was number seven in 2014, Olympic National Park was sixth. Zion just laid front, like, 400,000 more people, which, you know, that is meaningful for our economy. Why didn't we have that increase? Grand Teton increased 13%, Acadia 10%, Great Smoky Mountain 6%, Yosemite 5.5%, Glacier 1.18%, and Olympic 0.61%. Bottom of the top 10 less. It's just striking if you look at these statistics, both in percentages and in number of people, which means a lot of dollars to our economy. So, I could go on and say, in this interconnected world, the news that Olympic is the site of electronic warfare training, with the loudest jets in the military committing harmful electromagnetic radiation, has spread far and wide. Web sites dedicated to hikers, backpackers, bird watchers, and nature lovers have warned their readers of what's happening to Olympic. Gordon Hemtum of Once Were In, Saddle Spam, and Mountain Man Mick Dodge justified and warned their followers of the grave danger that Navy's activities posed, posed to the wilderness experience that Olympic National Park should be. The United Nations has expressed concern that the United States is not moving up to do its obligations under the World Heritage Convention to protect the wildlife heritage site. This is all bad PR, which logically has constant impact, visitation in Olympic National Park. And when you see these figures, as bad as they are compared to the other, other parks, you really need to get concerned with them all. That both sound and electromagnetic radiation is issues when compared to attractiveness national parks as well known. The National Park Services Director's Order Number 47, Soundscape Preservation and Noise Management states intrusive sounds are also a matter of concern to park visitors. As was reported in the U.S. Congress in the Report on the Ethics of Paracraft Overflights, the effects of paracraft overflights on the national park system. A system-wide survey of park visitors revealed that nearly as many visitors come to national parks to enjoy the natural soundscape. Soundscape, 91% has come to view the scenery, 93%. So, you connect these dots, and it's a very logical, predictable effect of what's happening out there. We've been saying for two years that this is, will not be good on tourism, and the statistics are beginning to show that. The public sphere of electromagnetic radiation, whether it be from X-ray machines, power lines, smart lasers, cell phones, electronic warfare jets, or whatever source, whether real or imagined, is so well-known, it's a good matter of common knowledge. You know, I'd like to add what we studied here, you know, every now and then, say, well, this what comes out of the press release. And we sent it to 4,000 people through constant contact. And we have a usual open rate of about 35%, which is pretty high. We sent out a notice about electromagnetic radiation, unlike five or six notices were sent out. That had an open rate of over 41%, which sort of surprised me, because my concerns generally have been mainly sound effects on visitation and wildlife. But just that word electromagnetic radiation headline resulted in about a 33.5% net rate on these communications, 40% for 4,000 people to go. So, that is probably something that's having a lot more impact than someone's thought. Again, not good publicity for Clowdon County or Olympic National Park. So, the bottom line is it's time to recognize the early warning signs that the piece of visitation coverage provided. With Olympic Peninsula's economy so dependent on the national park, it has passed the time for our elected representatives, on the basis of economics alone, to demand an end to the Navy's misuse of the Olympic Peninsula for its electronic warfare training purposes. And we have on film the Navy's representative in Pacific Beach admitting that this training can be done anywhere. So, why here, in one of the most beautiful parks in the country? It just doesn't make sense. Doesn't make sense for us as people who live here, doesn't make sense for the value of the national park, its aesthetics, environment, or dollars and cents. So, it's really time that here at Goldmark, not be the only elected official in the state to speak up and say something about this. So, you'll be getting copies of this press release when it comes, and I really want you to look at that table. It's just stunning, all these huge increases in visitation and Olympic National Park homeless method. Thank you for your time, and thanks for answering. It's something that should be worth it for this town.
Any questions at all? I think there are. Anybody else wishing to make comment?
For the board, Sheriff. I'd like to address the board, not as a sheriff, but as a retired naval flight officer for 22 years in the Navy, flying fighter jets, and who is well acquainted with both the mission and the physics of what goes on in Lookey Island. Correlation is not causation, and to make the assumption that training for electronic warfare in Olympic Peninsula is why there's been a drop in attendance, frankly baffles me. But I think that there can, one thing that can be said is, is that if ever I've heard anything about junk science, the effect, the noise, I'm not gonna argue, there is certainly noise associated, but the electromagnetic and magnetic radiation that's coming out of those airplanes, to claim that that has a harmful effect on people many, many thousand feet away is to deny reality. First of all, the operators of those airplanes, and by the way, when I flew fighters, I flew F4s and F14s, the F14 radar that O9 put out 10,000 watts of energy out the front end of that, and that was its air-to-air search radar. It put that out in a comb, it was at least 10 times more powerful than the spot jamming that the EA-6B and now the EA-18 Prowler puts out. You would be hard-pressed to find a device that you could even measure what this, what these jammings do. And to call it electronic warfare, while it's true, it is not, it does not visit violence upon the countryside or what it does. It, it, it basically broadcasts at very narrow beam, at fairly low power, and the whole idea is to jam the signal of either a missile that's homing in on you, or the communications, or other communications link. So, I just, I just want to say is that there is a lot of junk science. Nobody, no, there's no research that has ever shown that the effects of, and by the way, all the airliners that fly over have weather radar that put out anywhere from 2 to 500 watts. That's about what the EA-6, EA-18 puts out. So, I respect it, there may be noise issues, but I think that what we need to do is, we need to get back down to the physics to infer somehow that the electromagnetic radiation that's coming from these jets is harmful to life. Let me give you this thought experience or experiment. The people that fly these airplanes, including me, and I last flew them 20 years ago, if there were, if there were dangers for the radiation, there would be, there would be an elevated rate of ill health effects for the air crewmen, the pilots, as well as the people that are on the deck of the aircraft carriers. That study has been done, has been many studies, and there is no correlation whatsoever. And by the way, the, the person that's operating this, me sitting in that fighter jet that's putting out 8,000 to 12,000 watts, I'm getting putting out eight to twelve thousand watts, I'm getting, I'm getting a heck of a lot more radiation than anyone could possibly get on the ground just from the side of the doctor out. All right, I don't mean to long-winded, but, and I would finally add this, is that I believe in core responsibilities, and that's why I'm speaking now as a retired naval officer and not the sheriff. I would caution the board of commissioners getting involved in matters that are beyond our scope. The fact is, is that there's a, that the military has a need for this kind of training. I think for you guys to weigh in, particularly on the basis of junk science, it's going to complicate your jobs. Thank you.
I would like the opportunity to discuss the sheriff's.
A private citizen, Bill, better, not the sheriff.
Well, I think that the sheriffs, state minus twenty years out of date, and this is, the sheriff's well-known for calling climate change junk science.
Oh, Ron, I just flat ask, Ron. I have never called climate change junk science. I am not a doubter. Let's keep it on topic. I'm just trying to use sneer tactics, and I'm not buying it. I have a master's degree in physics. I know more about electronic radiation than you've ever, ever seen in your life.
Thanks.
You would, you could, what? Maybe you'd be best out of the side.
No.
Maybe you'd be best, like, two of you just.
No, it's not. You need to hear this.
Well, wait a second, Ron. We've been here for a half hour. It looks like you can hear, and I don't really want to, it's not best for you and the sheriff to get into a public dispute. You may be working together next year, the two of you, so keep it professional.
Well, I think it is because to call this junk science is belittling the science behind the problem. What the sheriff might not know is that there's a, there's a program in the military called Bio Effects Electronic Radiation to develop warfare weapons to affect people. Now, they have weapons that will introduce epileptic seizures. They have weapons that will change people's thought processes. And I'm not saying it's a part of this, but it, the EA says it will be for training anything. But the fact is, the military knows that these things can damage people, and they're developing weapons on that basis. It's absolute proven with department's, as, publications. But it's not the electronic warfare. It's not electromagnetic radiation. Facts that matter. It's perception, and that was my point. People are afraid of this. They're concerned about it. I told you, I was a sound guy, and I was shocked at how much more people voted or voted those, those that released that had to do with electromagnetic radiation. There were people that told me that would happen because of the concerns. And so, you know, there's no absolute proof that this was a cause and effect. I'll concede that to the sheriff, but you got to open your eyes. It's, it's what people feared would happen appears to be happening. So you can say that I should, and the sheriff, you know, took cast dispersions at the other side by calling it junk science.
Probably not the best case for including a public debate of this. That was my point.
Okay, well, excuse me. He was speaking as a private citizen, so I'm speaking as a private citizen. I would welcome the council to review all the information. And they can do this training in Iowa where it has been occurring, Commissioner Chaplin. They can do it anywhere according to the Navy's mathematics of each public hearing. It's not that we're opposing the training. It's just they have better places that are more financially wise places to do it than over a World Heritage Site.
Sheriff. I'll remind everybody in this room, these are great conversations to have on the campaign trail to drag the board of commissioners into the middle of campaigning. This seems a little inappropriate, and it kind of fits us in a tough spot, so.
And I, I'm a math or a water or anything related in my business, and I would agree with that, with the exception of the fact that there was, that a practical candidate that brought you guys into it and made it a public comment. So I feel like this is a good time for us to make, and to have this discussion. I would like to point out that Mr. Richards has come up here and spoken on both sides of his mouth at the same time. He trumps all these supposed facts and figures, or he recounts all these supposed facts and figures, and says, this is the reason why people are not coming here, and you guys should take a stand against it. And then at the same time, he says, well, you don't have, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying that maybe it's something we should look at. I think it's astounding that the sheriff or Bill, as a private citizen with all of his, his experience as a Navy pilot and a master in physics, you said, has all this, has all this life experience and knowledge to base his opinion off of, and Mr. Richards doesn't have a lot of scientific knowledge, except for some one magazine that he quoted, which, you know what, I saw in the National Enquirer that this lady had Bigfoot's child one day. It's all kind of the same thing, unless it's proven out. I also think it's remarkable, I would encourage you to look at it. Go ahead, look at it. And if it really is the perception that he's worried about, don't tell the Navy to not do this because of what people are afraid of, but calm people's fears. And in times like this, what people need, if they're afraid of the effects of this stuff, and it's been proven that there is no effect, and there is no causality, it's not going to affect the Marlet population, which is, from what I understand, point two percent of its total population is made up between California, Oregon, and Washington, and the other ninety-nine point eight percent is like in Alaska or some point in Canada. We don't have a big population of those here anyway, is my point. But instead, I would encourage the board to take leadership and talk to the people and say, we've looked at this, there is no reason to be afraid, everything is going to be fine, as opposed to backing down out of the fight and say, oh, no, don't worry about it. We don't want the Navy here because it might look bad for us. We like people that we want to be leaders. Whether I go in for you or not, I want you to be a leader. I don't want you to leave from behind. I want you to leave from the front and take a position and take a stand on something. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else want to make comment on this issue? Allow all. We have a calendar. All the stands is presented. Next week is this week's meeting. We continue to Monday at nine AM. Coach, you're still busy.